It's 7:31. Dr. Di Benedetto, would you like to start the regular meeting?
Yes. Let's call the order, the planning board meeting. I guess we start with the roll call.
Yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Defilia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Dr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Good? Is closed?
She's on mute.
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Levy? Mr. Ciano?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Okay.
Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all. This is not the notice requirements for the open public meeting law for the meeting have been satisfied. A copy of notice has been sent to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of Ocean Township Clerk on July 27, 2020. There's no smoking, obviously, but I guess you could in your own home. No new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony will be taken after 11:00 PM. Minutes for approval, July 27, 2020.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Is closed?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Case carried to October 26, 2020. Logan Community LLC, Block 137, Lot 4532, 1109 Logan Road, Ocean C4. Amano, Block 33, Point 14, Lot 2, 710 West Park Avenue, Oakhurst T-1. And Giovanni Scarpini, Scarpina, Block 9, Lot 6, 11, and 6.11, and 7.11. 65 Larchwood and 47 Larchwood, Ocean R-1.
Mr. Kirk, is it fair to say that these applications are carried without additional notice?
Yes.
You?
Okay, request for extension of minor subdivision, Matthew and Christine Clark, Block 1.40, Lots 9, 98, and 99, 400 Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Drive, excuse me, Ocean. Extension of approval, resolution of approval dated July 22, 2019, for minor subdivision with bulk variances. Attorney for the applicant, Rick Burdaski.
Burdaski. Good evening, Mr. Burdaski, how are you tonight?
Burdaski.
Good evening, I'm well. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Rick Burdaski, on behalf of the applicant.
Do you have any witnesses tonight, Mr. Burdaski?
I don't, I don't have any witnesses. The, if I may, I would just like to explain the request. It, the, this minor subdivision was approved by resolution dated July 22, 2019. The subdivision actually involved township-owned property. The applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Clark, live adjacent to a small piece of township-owned property. And the, and had, and have contracted with the township to acquire a portion of that property, three, consisting of 3,314 square feet to be added to their existing single-family residential home. The application was approved, there were no objectors under the statute, municipal land use law. The minor subdivision forming this, this sliver is required to be perfected within 190 days of that date. That wasn't done, there were some delays associated with legal descriptions. And we also were working out some details, both documentary and substantively with, and procedurally, I'm sorry, with respect to the township, in terms of advertising for the property. That's all been resolved. We were ready to go right at the conclusion of that 190-day period and then, which is coincided when COVID hit us. So we, we've been waiting for a meeting to get on in order to formally request an extension. All of the subdivision deeds have been reviewed and approved, are ready for signature, as is the deed from the township to Mr. and Mrs. Clark for that 3,300 square foot sliver. So the request is for a short adjournment just to achieve the recordation of that subdivision deed.
Mr. Burdaski, are you filing tonight under NJSA 40,55D-47?
45, D-47.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, members of the board, this might be considered more administrative than a hearing. And to expedite this, let me read paraphrase subsection G, which deals with extensions under applications like this. Says that the board should grant an extension of approval for a period determined by the board, not exceeding one year, from what would otherwise be the expiration date if the developer proves to the reasonable satisfaction of the board that developer was barred or prevented directly or indirectly from proceeding with the development because of delays in obtaining legally required approvals from other governmental entities and that the developer applied promptly. So with that in mind, Mr. Chair, I believe that we could ask members of the board if they have any questions, comments?
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Hearing none, then, I suggest, Ms. Chair, that we could offer someone the opportunity to suggest a motion along the lines of what I just read, in the affirmative or area in the negative.
So if someone would like to make a motion, either for or against the extension, and, and please specify the extension time.
I'll make a motion to have an extension for this for up to a year.
John Duffy will second that.
Roll call vote unless there's any discussion. Hearing none.
Okay. Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you, Sandy.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Our next one is 3 Sunset Drive LLC, Block 1.26, Lot 3, 1318 Edgewood Avenue. This is an application for a subdivide of an existing 10,000-square-foot lot into two 5,000-square-foot lots. This is on the corner with an existing 1.5-story residence. Variances on both lots are required, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, front and side yard setback, maximum building coverage, minimum gross floor area, and number of parking spaces. Attorney for the applicant is William Wenzel, Esquire.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. William Wenzel appearing on behalf of the applicant, 3 Sunset Drive LLC.
Mr. Wenzel, I don't know if you've appeared before the board before, but what we usually do is we'll start by marking the packet that's been provided to the board. For those who are listening virtually, this packet will be marked, it'd be 1, it's grading plan, landscaping and tree removal plan, the proposed minor subdivision revised, March 18, 2020, the fire marshal report, fire prevention officers' report, the traffic safety officers' report, the board planners' report, which is revised through September 18, and the board engineers' report dated September 19 this year, obviously. And then what we usually do, and I'll yield to the chair to see if he would like to continue this general procedure, we usually have our board planner paraphrase or read that report. And we were previously advised that Mr. Higgins isn't available tonight. And there was some information that Allison from his office would be here, is she here?
Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I think I was going to read his report, I think it was a mix-up.
Very good. Mr. Chair, would you like to proceed that way to have Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, of course. That would be a great idea.
All right, so we'll start with the board. Planners' report, report by Mr. Higgins, dated September 18, 2020. The applicant is proposing to subdivide an existing 10,000-square-foot lot into 2,000 to 5,000-square-foot lots. One lot will be a vacant building lot with a proposed 1-1/2-story residence, and while that will contain an existing 1-1/2-story residence. The site is an irregularly shaped, L-shaped corner lot at the southeast corner of the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Edgewood Avenue. It has 50 feet of frontage on Sunset Avenue and 150 feet of frontage on Edgewood Avenue. It consists basically of two segments, foot-by-100-foot segment, northern segment, that fronts on both Sunset Avenue and Edgewood Avenue, and a 50-foot-by-100-foot segment, southern segment, that fronts on Edgewood Avenue. That would be 50 feet of frontage on Edgewood by 100 feet deep. It is occupied by a 1,171-square-foot, 1-1/2-story residence that is situated on the southern 50-foot-by-100-foot segment that fronts on Edgewood Avenue. The existing garage is situated on the northern segment that fronts on both Sunset Avenue and Edgewood Avenue, although it is very close to the existing residence. The lot is unusual in that since it is a corner lot, it requires 100 feet of frontage and a minimum 10,000 square feet in area. Interior lots require a minimum 5,000 square feet in area and a minimum 50-foot frontage. Consequently, the subject site is non-conforming due to the fact that it is a corner lot and only has 50 feet of frontage on Sunset Avenue. There is this zoning table there which outlines the variances summarily, but I think we've read pretty much all of them for you, so we'll just kind of move on. Analysis, a total of five parking spaces are required for the two dwellings. The applicant has added one additional parking space to the site to provide a total of four parking spaces. That comment, I'll interject from, is relative to an earlier plan. So Jim had made a comment about parking and the applicant increased the parking to four from an earlier addition of the plan. The residential site improvement standards require a total of five parking spaces for the two sites. If this were a standalone site with only one residence, only two parking spaces would be required since RSIS requires 2-1/2 spaces per dwelling. I disagree with that analysis, but having said that, RSIS allows you to round up also, could be three, it just depends on the board's review of the situation. Since this is a subdivision, the required parking is five spaces. It would be my preference to see a total of five off-street parking spaces, but to do so would also increase impervious coverage, which is a concern of the board engineer. With reference to negative impact, I defer to the board's engineer with regard to drainage concerns. It should be noted that while the overall impervious coverage is less than permitted by the ordinance, it is likely that one larger lot will have less impervious coverage than two smaller lots. This is evidenced by the fact that the existing impervious coverage on the lot is 2,339.75 square feet, and the proposed impervious coverage is 3,670 square feet, from an increase of 1,330 square feet, or a 57% increase. Consequently, the impacts on drainage from two smaller lots tend to be greater than from one larger lot. And then my, oh, and let me just try and read this, so bear with me. I have a report dated September 19th. This is my second report, we've attended a technical review meeting with the applicant and, and his engineer, and discussed some of these issues. And the, the current plan is obtained from some of the conversations we had. I'll read my report. Item 1, this is an application to subdivide 1 10,000-square-foot corner lot into two 50-foot-by-100, 5,000-square-foot lots within the RSEC zone. Bulk variances are revisioned as discussed below. The plan also appears to indicate that variances are being requested for in addition to the existing one-story residence that will remain. This must be clarified as the addition appears completed when you're on the site. The RSEC zone requirement for a corner lot area is 10,000 square feet, and the area requirement for interior lots is 5,000 square feet. It follows that the minimum tract area necessary for a two-lot minor subdivision of an existing corner lot is 15,000 square feet. Proposed Lot 302, 3.02, the interior lot is conforming as to area and dimensional requirements. Proposed Lot 3.01, the corner lot, requires variances for lot area and lot frontage. In addition to area dimensional variances requested, proposed Lot 301, 3.01, sorry, variances for the development of lot are also requested and discussed below. Item 2, this surrounding neighborhood is generally developed and has been for many years. This neighborhood was one of the earliest fully-developed neighborhoods within the township. Much of the development along Sunset Avenue took place more than 65 years ago. Since then, township's highway is 35, it has been fully developed. The highway has been widened and dualized, and adjacent Asbury Park has initiated and continues with a substantial redevelopment effort. As a result, Sunset Avenue is now the primary direct connector between the township's Highway 35 Conder and the Asbury Park beachfront. Accordingly, jurisdiction of Sunset Avenue has transferred from the township to the county of Monmouth, and the township has adopted the current RSEC zoning, which requires corner lots as street intersections, like those with Sunset Avenue, to have larger dimensions and areas than lots within the interiors of blocks. Item 3, I previously indicated in paragraph 2 of my 6920 review of the matter that from an engineering perspective, I do not support the proposed subdivision of this property. And I list below that item 2 as it appeared in June. The following provide expanded descriptions, details of existing conditions which are a basis of my concerns. A, given existing spot elevations upon the current grading plan, topographic contour lines near the boundaries of adjacent lots 2.01, 2.02, and 13 appear to be incorrectly drawn. B, existing lot topography is very flat. As defined by spot elevations and contour lines upon the grading plan, the distribution of surface water leaving the site is as follows. Approximately 15% of the subject property drains easterly and northeasterly onto and across adjacent Lot 2.02 to a low sump area within a rear yard of Lot 2.01, that's two lots to the east. This drainage area consists of most of the property area, supposed to be Lot 3.02, including the existing residence, as well as more than half of the area proposed to be the rear yard of 3.01. Approximately 26% of the property drains northeasterly to the northwesternly, or toward, I should have said, toward the northwesternly corner of Lot 2.02 and Sunset Avenue. It is noted that the south-to-north landslide paralleling the common boundary with Lot 2.02 is extremely flat with a slope of less than 0.2%. The remaining 16% of the subject property is located within the front yard of Edgewood Avenue and drains to the gutter line of the street, which slopes in a southerly direction. C, Edgewood Avenue concrete curbs along the site frontage are somewhat deteriorated and exhibit an average face reveal of about 2 inches. D, Edgewood Avenue sidewalks of the site are also substandard due in part to age and wear and in part to having been heaved by tree roots. C, there are no municipal storm drains within several hundred feet of the subject property. Four, the following obtained from a review of the development proposal. A, notwithstanding variances from ordinance bulk requirements to create proposed Lot 3.01, once created, additional variances are required to actually develop the lot. Pursuant to setback requirements for corner lots within the RSEC zone, proposed Lot 3.01 has an allowable building envelope that is 15 feet wide and 40 feet long. In this regard, applicant is asking for a front yard setback variance permitting a new home to be constructed with a setback of 14.5 feet from Edgewood Avenue. The house itself has proposed footprint dimensions of 30 by 30, 30 feet by 39 feet, and its architectural front would face Sunset Avenue. B, it follows from A above, the rear yard of the new house, upon proposed Lot 3.01, would be the southeasterly corner of the lot. Given the modest size of the proposed dwelling and a lot improvements depicted, which are basically a parking area, a home, and a walk to the home, it is not unreasonable to expect that an occupant might want an outdoor patio and/or accessory structure like a shed. Both of these would create impervious coverage that would, that given topography of the grading plan could only drain onto adjacent Lot 2.02 and further to the sump area in, in the rear yard of Lot 2.01. It is noted that the grading plan proposes a 2-foot-by-2-foot-by-2-foot stone recharge pit at the southeasterly corner of proposed Lot 3.01 to collect and mitigate such runoff. It is further noted that no soil permeability information is provided in support of the recharge pit, and that the storage volume of the proposed recharge pit would barely accommodate or be adequate to contain 3/8 inches of runoff from a 100-square-foot patio or shed, much less the runoff generated by the engineering design storms of ordinance subsection 21-55.11A1. C, given existing topography and drainage patterns along a common boundary with adjacent Lot 2.02, the grading plan does not demonstrate that lot grading requirements of subsection 18.04.4 of the current New Jersey Construction Code can be met upon proposed Lot 3.01 without directing additional water onto the side and front yards of neighboring Lot 2.02. D, the rear yard of the existing house, proposed, upon proposed Lot 3.02 would be the easterly 30% of the lot. Given the modest size of the existing dwelling and proposed lot improvements depicted, it is not unreasonable to expect that an occupant might also want an outdoor patio and/or an accessory structure like a shed. Both of these would create impervious coverage that, as with proposed Lot 3.01, can only drain across adjacent Lot 2.02 and onward to the slump area, the sump area in the rear yard of Lot 2.01. E, existing grading upon the area proposed to be Lot 3.02 does not comply with lot grading requirements of subsection 18.04.4 of the current New Jersey Construction Code, and the grading plan does not propose any substantive change. F, pursuant to ordinance subsections 2155.7 and 8-4.1, curbs and sidewalks along Edgewood Avenue should be replaced in connection with the proposed subdivision. Excuse me. Given township requirements for curb and sidewalk in the ordinance, such replacement would likely increase the difficulty of grading and proposed development upon Lot 3.01. In summary, in pursuant to plans submitted by applicant and ordinance subsection 21-55.1A, I can offer no engineering argument in favor of the board granting the lot area dimensional and setback requirements required to create two lots, both of which as a result of existing site, onsite topography, are difficult to develop and likely to exacerbate existing negative impacts upon budding properties where only one such lot presently exists.
All right, thank you.
By the way, just for the record, we've had a number of applications in this neighborhood in the 30 years I've been with the board, and this problem has come up multiple times. It's just that the area was developed a long time ago and not to any real standards and very tightly.
Okay. Mr. Wenzel, do you have something that you would like to say about the property? You're on mute.
I think Mr. Fitzgerald pretty much summed up the parameters of the property. He's accurate in describing its dimensions. We are before the board here tonight proposing to subdivide the existing about 100 lots, leaving the 1-1/2-story home on what would be Lot 3.01, create a new Lot 3.02, and ultimately construct a home on Lot 3.02. We would also be removing the existing detached garage that's presently on the property. I have two witnesses tonight, I have Mr. Roberts, who was the principal of the applicant, and I also have Raymond Carpenter, who's going to serve as our planner and engineer.
Sandy, you're muted.
Who are we going to have to be your first witness, Mr. Wenzel?
Mr. Roberts.
All right, is he on, there he is. Would you raise your right hand, please? You promised to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so if you got. I didn't hear, and I see you speaking, but I didn't hear you, you can say yes?
He's on mute.
Oh, just speak up, Mr. Roberts, a little louder.
You know, he's on two screens. There's a screen where he.
Yes.
As far as I can hear, it is.
Is that better?
All right, Mr. Roberts, you affirm that you're testifying under oath, okay, very good.
I do.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You can proceed, Mr. Wenzel, with your witness.
Okay, I understand that Mr. Stewart is going to transfer the administration of the hearing to me so I can use exhibits.
Yes.
Yep. What's your hack? Better than the moves and things are. Mr. Roberts, could you please describe your position with the applicant?
I handle the property acquisitions and management of the property.
And this 3 Sunset Drive LLC currently owned, 1318 Edgewood.
Yes.
How long have you owned that?
How long?
Yes.
Since October of last year, 2019.
And what currently exists on that lot?
There is a single-family house, a detached garage, and it's an L-shaped lot, so it's, the lot is kind of bifurcated by the garage.
After you purchased that property, did you do any type of renovations to the existing home?
Yes, we put an addition on the second floor of the 1318 Edgewood House and renovated the entire structure inside and out.
And is the detached garage still on that property?
Yes, the garage still exists today and it's, and it's form, current form.
And how many bedrooms does that have, does that house have?
The renovated house has three bedrooms.
You're currently before the board requesting that the single lot be subdivided into two lots, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, remove the garage and create another 50 by 100 lot.
And what would your intention be to do on the newly-created lot?
We want to remove the garage, which we feel is unsightly and doesn't go with the neighborhood, and put up a new house on the corner lot, similar to the other houses in the neighborhood and the one that we've renovated and redone.
Would there be a garage for that new house?
No, no garages.
Would there be driveways, well, strike that, are there driveways, is there a driveway now for the current home that's on 1318 Edgewood?
Yes.
And how many car driveways?
I believe that's a one-car driveway.
And what would the plan be after the detached garage is removed?
We would have a two-car garage for the existing, I'm sorry, a two-car driveway for the existing house and a new two-car driveway for the new home, for both.
And where would the driveways be for the two homes? And where would the driveways be for the two homes?
They would both be on Edgewood, on the Edgewood side.
Listen, Sean, we'd like to, well, I previously marked this, we'd like to mark this A3.
All right, then, Mr. Wenzel, you mentioned A3. What are the exhibits, A1 and 2?
A1 is going to be an architect design plan. A2 is going to be the floor plans, and A3 is going to be this.
Well, normally, you'd mark these in sequence as they testify, too. There's a particular reason why you want to change that order?
The sheet that I sent to Mr. Stewart earlier this afternoon had them in A1, 2, and 3, but I...
So what I'm looking at, it says A1 on it. But you want to have that marked A3, you say?
A1's not, that wasn't a marking. A1 is in my marking. That was something that was put there by the architect. But either way, Mr. Brown, if you want to mark this A1, that's fine.
Yeah, let's mark it A1.
Okay, very good.
And you have to have it described, and did you say that this is just dropped off today?
No, it was supplied previously. In fact, Mr. Fitzgerald mentions it in his report.
Okay, so it's been on record 10 days?
That is, that was filed. This is all, the engineering plans and the architectural plans are timely.
But you want to proceed, Mr. Wenzel?
Sure. Mr. Roberts, what we've now marked as A1, can you explain to the board what this document depicts?
The Edgewood Avenue view shows the existing house with the proposed elevation of a new house facing Sunset.
So on the top of the drawing, the house to the right is the existing house on Edgewood, correct?
That's correct, right. That's the one that we've renovated and put the addition on, and the one to the left up top is the proposed facing Sunset with the side view along Edgewood.
And then the drawing down on the bottom?
The bottom drawing depicts what the elevation would look like from Sunset Avenue for the new home.
All right, for the record, this would also be marked at this point for identification only, and it will be A2, and it'll have to be described by your witness, and also, if you're planning to have it marked in evidence, you're going to have to have it qualified more than by a person who has no involvement with the creation of the document.
I understand that. Mr. Roberts, what is this document?
This was a survey of the existing property showing a depiction of what the new home would look like on the survey, and the existing home, what that would look like. The only thing is that the driveway for the existing home has been expanded to, you know, to provide two cars on that.
We have this marked as A3 for identification.
For the record, at the bottom right, it does say A2. You're indicating that's an internal marking by the author, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, you have to describe for identification purposes only.
Mr. Roberts, can you please describe for the board what this document entails?
This is proposed architectural plans that show the floor plan for the new home, both first and second floors.
And will the new home have how many bedrooms?
It's three bedrooms, two bathrooms. It's really like a one-and-a-half-story Cape bungalow-type to fit the neighborhood and, you know, the charm of that, of that area.
And there'll be two bedrooms on the first floor and one on the second floor?
Yes, that's what we proposed.
And will Three Sunset be the builder on the project, or it will be a different corporation?
It would be Rocon contract.
Now, you affiliate it with Rocon as well?
Yes.
And what's your position as well?
The president.
I have nothing further from this witness.
And Mr. Chair, should we open up to questions by the board?
Yeah. I was going to say, any board members have any questions? I have a question. You're proposing a one-and-a-half-story home when it's truly a two-story home. How are we, how are we calling that a one-and-a-half? I've never heard of a one-and-a-half-story house. I'm not sure what a one-and-a-half-story house is.
That's how the architect depicts it. It's more, I don't know if you've seen the house that we did there. We put the second floor on it. So it's not a full second story where it has all the exterior walls. You might notice the architecture is more of a cottage-type, where you can get, you have room on the second floor for the bedroom, et cetera, but it's not a full second floor like you might see with, you know, maybe a colonial or something like that. That's the best way I can describe it. That's how the architect depicts that. Those are, you know, that's his designation.
They're two-story homes, but it's not anything that's not allowed anyways.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from the board members?
I have a question. So, obviously, we have some drainage issues here, and our professional has expressed concern. What are we going to do about these drainage issues? Because if I live next door, I'd be pretty unhappy about this.
Well, I appreciate the question, sir. We're going to address those issues through our planner and engineer.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, so safe to say that, safe to say that the objections that our engineer had, all those things are going to be handled through your engineer, be addressed?
That's right.
Yeah, this is Sandy Brown. I have a few questions of Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, so you are part-owner of a development company that acquires property for improvement, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So you purchased this sometime last year with the full knowledge that zoning only permitted one home on that existing lot, is that fair to say?
Yes.
And so with that knowledge, then you apparently put a substantial amount of money into the existing home, is that correct?
That is correct.
And after that time, you made this application requesting permission to subdivide and add another house, right?
Yes, I don't know what the timing was like, but, you know, I don't know what the timing looked like on what the application was made when we purchased it. I mean, it was something that I did right away, I was looking at that.
Okay, but obviously, you purchased it knowing that there was no right to put up another house, that's fair to say, right?
Yes, of course.
All right, and your plan is to sell both houses if the board grants the approvals that you see, is that fair to say?
That is fair to say, yes.
So there's an existing garage that you're planning to demolish, correct?
Correct.
And instead of a garage for either proposed lots, you are only going to have a driveway instead, is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, what are your plans pragmatically for storage and the like that would normally be on a lot for a house like the one that exists in the proposed house?
Storage for what? Anything?
Storage for anything that would normally be in a garage in that area of the township in that zoning.
Well, there'll be plenty of storage in the home. They might put up a shed, I don't know. I mean, there's, for parking purposes right now, like I said, there's just one, there's a one-car driveway, we would be adding additional spaces for parking, so it would alleviate that, but as far as storage, I think, I think that would go with the house. There would be plenty of storage inside the garage.
Where would an owner put, let's say, a lawnmower for storage purposes?
Probably in a shed.
Now, if there was a shed that was put up, that was going to add to impervious coverage, is that correct?
I guess it would, yes.
And if you sold these homes, is it your understanding that a homeowner could install, let's say, impervious surfaces for patio or the like?
Well, whatever would be permitted for any home could be done on these as well.
Okay.
I don't have any preconceived notions of what they may or may not do.
Sure.
But there's small decks that go down, down to grade, so, you know, they could use the grass there, but, you know, what they might want to do in the future in that regard, I'm not sure.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Chair, in light of the fact that the next witness is going to answer presumably a lot of the questions, I would suggest that Mr. Roberts hold off, and he be available to answer additional questions, or any by the board or other folks.
I agree, I agree. Do we, do we need to have any of the public ask him any questions?
Yes, we do, and if they're, first of all, we should find out if anybody has any questions, and if so, I can go through the guidelines that we always provide for cross-examination.
Why don't you take, why don't you see if, is there any questions from the public?
Yes, there is.
Or Mr. Roberts? Need to state your name and your address.
Thank you, Doctor. My name is Vaughn Clay. My wife Lynn and I live at 1504 Sunset Avenue. It's the adjacent property. I think it might be the 2.01 property that Mr. Fitzgerald was describing when he was going through the engineering report.
All right. I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Clay. 2.02 is immediately adjacent, and 2.01 is two homes to the east.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, we live, we're in the corner of both of the properties that are being discussed this evening.
All right, for purposes of record, could you please spell your first and last name?
First name Vaughn, V-A-U-G-H-N, and the last name is Clay, C-L-A-Y.
All right, Mr. Clay, is it just you who's going to testify, or I think your wife is there?
My wife is here on the call. Her first name is Lynn, L-Y-N-N-E.
Is she going to be part of this, or is she just going to be?
She's here on the call as well, yes.
Okay, so have you been, are you familiar with these kinds of proceedings?
First time.
All right, very good. So we have two segments for these hearings where members of the public have the opportunity to participate. One is now, and it's technically just for questions of the witnesses. What's a bit of a challenge, especially for folks who aren't familiar with this, is that you're only supposed to ask technical questions, and later on, when all the witnesses are done, then you have the opportunity to make statements. But because, especially with lay folks, there's a merging of both, I'm going to ask you now if you can swear, but you're not on video, are you?
No, but I can, but you need to...
All right, well, this is one of the challenges, members of the board, for COVID-era video, but we'll have to go with the affirmations of Mr. Clay. So, Mr. Clay, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and tell me if you're raising your right hand.
I am.
You promised to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
And is your wife planning to say anything tonight?
I don't know. I'll be doing, asking the questions.
Okay, so we'll have to limit what you have to say now and later on to just what you say on behalf of you and Lynn, okay?
Yes.
So again, for right now, try to limit anything you say to questions of the witness, okay?
I will.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the questions, I guess, that I would have relates back to the drainage concerns. I know that there was just discussion about hard surfaces and how that, I guess, I'm trying to understand how that will be remedied within the plan.
All right, Mr. Wenzel, is your answer going to be that you have to address that?
Yes, exactly. The engineer is going to address all of the engineer.
Okay, and Mr. Clay, next question?
As a layperson, I'm wondering, I know that Mr. Fitzgerald had talked earlier in the evening about just the density, the age of the neighborhood and the density, and I'm wondering for Mr. Wenzel if there's going to be any information that talks about the setbacks, and is it normal for property to be only five feet away from what I can read in the drawings that were presented to us in a mailing? Is that normal as compared to what we'd be seeing maybe in another location?
Mr. Wenzel, is that going to be handled by your next witness?
Yes, Mr. Clay, that, those issues will all be addressed by my next witness as well.
Sure. And then I guess my last question right now would be, I guess, my concern about just the number of trees, there's a number of mature oak trees that are on the current property in question, and I'm wondering exactly how many proper, how many of these trees would need to be removed to accommodate not only the existing house that was renovated, but also the new house that's being discussed this evening.
Same answer, Mr. Wenzel?
Same answer, yes.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Clay, at this time?
Not for now, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that have any questions or comments for this witness?
Questions right now.
Questions, excuse me. Mr. Brown, it doesn't sound like there's anyone else from the public that would like to question the witness? Let's close that and start with, back to Mr. Wenzel for the next witness.
All right, Mr. Wenzel, introduction, next witness, please.
I call Raymond Carpenter.
All right, Mr. Carpenter, raise your right hand, please. Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
All right, Mr. Wenzel, you can go through qualifications.
Mr. Carpenter, could you please describe for the board? Mr. Carpenter, could you please describe for the board your educational background and professional qualifications?
Yes. I have a degree and Bachelor's Science of Civil Engineering from Penn State University. I received my license to practice engineering in Jersey in 1976. And I received my license to practice planning in 1980. And I've been appearing before numerous boards in both Monmouth and Ocean County ever since that time.
Mr. Carpenter, go ahead. I'm sorry. I will accept your credentials.
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple collateral questions. So, Mr. Carpenter, I'm generally familiar with the different licenses. And in terms of the planning license, did you receive that historically as part of being a PE? Or was that a completely separate licensure for the planning?
That was way back in 1880. They gave us the license. We did have to make application for it. We did have to provide documentation as to our experience. It was not just a rubber stamp.
Got it. But fair to say that you're grandfathered in to be a professional planner because of your expertise historically as a PE?
And as a planner, yes.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
You can continue, Mr. Carpenter, with your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carpenter, were you retained to perform?
Mr. Chair, it looks like we have a problem. I didn't hear Mr. Wenzel. Did anybody else have that problem?
Yeah.
I didn't clearly either.
Mr. Wenzel, you're going to have to start again.
Very well. Mr. Carpenter, were you retained in your capacity as an engineer and planner to deal with this project in 1318 Edgewood Avenue?
That's correct.
And as part of your retention, what exactly were you retained to do?
I was retained to do a grading plan, a plot plan, and a minor subdivision plan.
And did you prepare those plans?
Yes, I did.
I'm now bringing up what we'd like to mark as A4. Of course. As you can see, I'm trying to rotate it.
Try the view, Bill, top left corner. Workday view. See the workday view?
We're getting it.
Couple more.
No, no.
You have to do it one at a time. One more.
There we go.
Okay.
All right. Again, we propose this as exhibit A4.
What is the date on that?
It was originally drawn on October 1st, 2019. Revised 2020.
You have to repeat that, Mr. Wenzel. I didn't hear the date.
Originally drafted on October 1st, 2019. Revised on March 19th, 2020. And then last revised on July 28th, 2020.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Carpenter, is this the... Are you planning to prepare?
Yes, this is a subdivision plan.
Could you describe for the board what the project consists of?
It consists of subdivision, subdividing one lot, Lot 3. Two individual building lots, one fronting on Sunset Avenue and the other one fronting on Edgewood Avenue. It's an L-shaped piece of property at this point. There's a 150 feet of frontage on Edgewood, and there's 50 feet of frontage on Sunset. Both lots are 5,000 square feet.
And what is the proposal, is your understanding, is what to construct on these two lots?
Well, there's an existing, there was an existing one-story house on the interior lot. It's since been reconstructed with a half-story on top. And then there's a proposed new structure on the corner lot. This will also be a one-and-a-half-story, single-family residential.
And is your understanding that there's any variance as part of the subdivision?
Oh, yes. The main variance is the fact that the corner lot, based on the ordinance, has to have a minimum of 100 foot of frontage on both streets and a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet. We have 50 feet of frontage on Sunset and 100 feet of frontage on Edgewood. And only 5,000 square feet of lot area, based on the house that were proposed on this corner lot, there would need a variance for the minimum front yard on Sunset and the minimum front yard on Edgewood. Of course, lot width, lot frontage would have to be a variance on Sunset. Lot area would be a variance. And that's it for that lot. The interior lot, the only variance requested is front yard setback for the frontage onto Edgewood. It's an existing structure, and it's only 20 feet, six inches, where 30 feet is required.
As far as the front yard setback on...
I didn't hear the question.
For the existing home, the 20.6 feet?
Yes.
That condition already exists, right? Isn't that quite non-conforming?
That's an existing non-conforming. That's correct.
Do you find any issue with the proposal to have two parking spaces on the driveways for each one of the proposed new lots?
Yes. The way I understand, the RISs requirements is that for a three-bedroom house, it's only required to have two parking spaces. If you have four bedrooms, it would be two and a half parking spaces. But both of these houses only have three bedrooms.
Did you review the ERISA code prior to testifying, Seaman?
Yes, I did.
And that would be Section 5:21-4.1?
That's correct.
You read the report of Mr. Higgins?
Yes, I did.
Property's in an R6 zone, correct?
That's correct.
Do you believe, in your capacity as a planner, that the positive criteria is met with this subdivision?
Yes. For one thing, I did a survey of the properties surrounding this site. Within 200 feet, there's 10 corner properties. There's one corner property that's conforming. It's 100 by 100. There's this subject property that's non-conforming. And we have eight other properties that are 50 by 100, corner lots within 200 feet of the site. So what we're proposing is not out of character for the neighborhood. And we feel that we can put up a reasonable-sized house, managed property, without any problems impacting the neighbors. We'll get into addressing the landscaping and the drainage later. But as far as I'm concerned, it promotes the purposes of MLUL in establishing an appropriate population density and concentration that will contribute to well-being in persons, neighborhoods, and communities. This entire community, if you look at the overall plan up in the key map, you'll see that 90% of the lots are 50 by 100. I think there's maybe six lots, six corner lots, that are conforming in this entire neighborhood. So corner lots are more of a, not usual, but unusual situation in this particular development.
And you believe that the negative criteria is being established?
Well, one of the negative comments was about the impervious coverage. In fact, yes, obviously, when we're constructing a new house, we're going to be increasing the impervious coverage. But you have to keep in mind that the corner property had existing garage on it and an existing driveway, which we will be removing and building new. And also, the property, the interior lot, had a concrete walkway around the entire back of the property and the front of the property that is no longer going to be there. So if you do a net-net calculation on the impervious coverage, I believe that you end up with about 670 square feet of less impervious, if you take into account that a proposed house on Lot 3.02, which is the corner lot, the entire roof runoff will be recharged into a drywall system in the front of the property. So there will be no runoff from that roof.
There was a question earlier from one of the members of the audience, Mr. Clay, about the, if I understood correctly, the closeness of the new proposed dwelling to the property lot. Is... How far is the new...
The new house is five feet from the property line, and the side yard setback is five feet required. So we need the required setbacks.
Okay.
Do you have any further questions, Mr. Wenzel? Your witness?
I'm changing exhibits. Just give me one second. Do that again.
Just advise us of what you're doing. Keep the meeting moving along.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you could see what I was doing. Exhibit's loading. Mr. Carpenter, while the exhibit loads, did you also... Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Did you also do a grading and drainage plan?
Yes, I did.
Just rotating. We're getting there. It's still loading. I'd like to mark this as A5.
All right, it's marked. We'll have your witness describe it. Is that correct, Wenzel?
Yes. Yes, I will. Mr. Carpenter, do you see what's up on the screen now?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Did you prepare this drawing?
Yes, I did.
And what is this drawing?
This is a grading plan, last revised 7/28/20, showing the proposed grades and the proposed drainage recharge system, along with a soil boring and details for the curve along Edgewood and Sunset Avenue.
We know that there's some concerns that have been raised by the township engineer about drainage on this project. Can you please explain for the board why you believe that the drainage is adequate as designed?
Okay. Based on your drainage ordinance, I went through and reviewed it. And one of the things I'd like to point out is that this is pretty comprehensive drainage ordinance. But what it really boils down to is that, since this is not a major project, the only thing we have to design for is a quality storm, water quality storm. And I believe, and I think it says under erosion control, determined that the analysis of increased stormwater volume from the preconstruction to the post-construction is, for a two-year storm, is infiltrated. Now, when we did this drainage design, there was a request from the board's engineer to use a 25-year storm for drainage design. And that's what we designed it for. And that's what I came up with for a 600-gallon tank.
I did not request that. I did not request that.
We were at the tech meeting, and that was one of the things that we agreed to.
One of the things we agreed to was I would look at what you gave me, but I wasn't making any promises because I didn't think the lot, as I said in June, should be subdivided, mostly because of the topography.
Well, we've met the conditions.
The other problem is your detailed analysis, your detailed analysis did not get submitted.
Well, I have a detailed analysis I can give you. And I can do this.
My problem really is not really with the recharge part of it. My problem is that if the lot is created by entitlement, there'll be two rear yards that allow 90% coverage, impervious coverage, of buildable lot area. So to make it clear, each lot is 5,000 square feet. The whole lot is 10,000 square feet. The buildable lot area, assuming there's no wetlands and flood hazards, and we know there isn't, so that's not an issue. So the buildable lot area in total is 7,500 square feet. And these people that can live there are entitled to put patios and other impervious coverage up to 90% of that, which is now something of the order of 6,700 square feet. Pretty much...
No, you're not correct. They're not entitled. They would have to...
The problem is that my concern, my concern is that the places that they're going to put it are patios and sheds in the rear yard. And the rear yards of both proposed lots, as I look at your grading plan, drain to the east, not to the street.
Because this property is subject to a variance. And one of the issues of this application is the variance for impervious coverage. They would have to come back to the board to increase the impervious coverage on any one of these lots. They would have to come back to the board to increase the impervious coverage on any one of these lots.
That's not how it's interpreted.
Couldn't put a shed, they can't do anything without coming back to the board to increase the impervious coverage.
That's not how we look at it.
Uh, Mr. Wenzel, um, are you gonna have your expert discuss any more documents tonight?
Yes, I was going to do that. Are we in a hurry?
I suggest that, uh, we go on to, uh, whatever other documents the expert wants to talk about because I have some, uh, recommendations, um, after this committee's mission completed. Is that okay with you, Bill?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Let me get, let me get the last, I have one more that I'll put up, let me get that up.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Carpenter, do you see what I have up now?
Yes, that's the landscaping plan.
Okay, if I could mark this.
Is this A6, uh, Mr. Wenzel?
Yes, it is A6.
Okay, uh, have your witness describe it, please.
I will do so. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, what is this, uh, drawing that we have up on the screen now?
This is a, uh, a landscaping plan. Uh, what we did is we located all the existing trees on the property. Uh, you'll see those, uh, those are deciduous trees or evergreens, and we've marked that to be removed uh, in order to do the development, primarily the corner lot. One, two, three, four, five of the trees are involved in the actual structure. And one, two, two other trees have to be removed, one of them for the sidewalk out to Sunset, and one of them for the, uh, the driveway alongside of the proposed dwelling.
With the remaining trees, uh, other than the ones you just talked about? Or is there any proposal to add any type of landscaping to the new, new lot?
Um, not at this point, I think there might be some foundation plannings, uh, proposed. But as far as trees are concerned, there's a fairly good number of trees on this property. And I don't think the addition of additional trees to this property will be beneficial to the property, number one. And I think the trees, um, will do well because there's too much competition.
Um, is there anything else, um, that you'd like to point out to the board that's on this drawing?
Um, no, it's primarily to show the existing, uh, trees. It shows where we did the soil boring, which is right in the center of the, uh, proposed house on Lot, uh, 3.01. Uh, we do have the soil analysis on the grading plan. Uh, I do have a report from Rutgers University on the permeability and seep analysis of the soil that we encountered, uh, when we did the soil boring.
I, I have nothing further on this drawing.
Mr. Wenzel, are you concluded?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Questions from the board? For Mr. Carpenter?
I have a question. It seems to me, um, from what I'm reading from our engineers and from what, um, Mr. Carpenter is saying, there's two different things regarding the drainage. It seems that, um, the, our engineers are of the opinion that, um, the topography is not sufficient to drain the water in the right direction. Am I understanding that correctly, or?
No.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying it's draining to the east.
And this would affect neighboring houses.
Correct.
Right, can you elaborate on that, what's happening with the drainage issues and how we're combating those?
Uh, well, first of all, on Lot, uh, the interior lot, uh, there's an existing house on the property, and we're not changing the drainage pattern at all on that property. The driveway will drain out to the Edgewood Avenue. Uh, the front yard of that house used to drain out to Edgewood Avenue anyway. So there's no change in the drainage pattern on that lot. The drainage pattern on the corner lot is going to be somewhat changed, obviously, when we construct the driveway and the structure. But for the most part, the existing drainage pattern on that corner lot doesn't change. What does change dramatically is the amount of water that's going to be generated by that property. The entire structure area, the seventeen hundred square feet of structure, is going to be totally recharged into a tank, and that water will not flow anywhere. Will not flow out to Sunset, will not flow out to Edgewood, and will not flow out to Lot, uh, 202. So that's a benefit.
Is that the drywall you're talking about, right, it's on the plans?
Yes, the drywall's on the grading plan, uh, right in the left front of the, uh, house on Sunset. And it's a six-hundred-gallon tank, it's designed to contain a twenty-five-year storm, one hundred percent.
I'm sorry, is, is there anything else that you could propose to alleviate the engineers' concerns about drainage?
Yes, I was, uh, gonna propose a, what they call a slot drain along the property line between Lot 202 and the corner lot. But that amounts to, is it's about a two-to-three-foot-deep trench, uh, with a six-inch perforated pipe, the trench being one foot wide and filled with three-quarter-inch stone, uh, to alleviate any concerns with water, pocketing or collecting along the property line between that lot and Lot 202. But you've got to keep in mind that all the roof runoff is being taken directly into the, uh, drywall. So the only runoff that you're gonna have in this area is a five-foot strip of land. And if you look at the landscape plan, there's trees along that entire strip, for the most part. And that trench, there's not gonna be a lot of water being generated in that strip.
That trench will be, will be constructed solely on this property, right?
On this property, correct. Since this house is a, since this house is a crawl space, uh, we're not, uh, limited, uh, to the location of the dry, drywall. And I'll be probably putting the drywall, abutting the foundation of this structure. Since it does not affect, uh, the crawl spaces, the crawl space, it's not a habitable space. Uh, we're not concerned about, uh, water infiltration into the crawl space. But I didn't hear that.
Does the existing house have a basement, and does the adjacent house, are you aware of, does that have a basement that could potentially be impacted?
They have a basement in that house, um, uh, inspected the basement. There's no evidence of water penetration into the foundation. The drywall system that we're proposing is close to seventy-five feet away from the existing structure. Uh, normally, we keep drain, drywall systems, or recharge systems, a minimum of ten feet away from a house with a basement. This drainage system is going to be seventy-five feet away from the basement.
Any other questions?
I might point out, there's a reference to, uh, in, uh, I might point out, there's a reference to, uh, section, uh, eighteen oh four point four of the New Jersey Construction Code, um, relative to grading on the property. That doesn't apply because that's only for, uh, three or more structures on one piece of property, or a commercial site plan, or a major subdivision.
Uh, I have a question, I have a question, Mr. Carpenter. Have a, uh, drawing with the proposed house on the, on this property? Do you have a proposed, uh, drawing of the new house?
But if the house is on, uh, both on the landscape plan and on the grading plan, you'll see, uh, a solid, dark line, uh, where it shows proposed one-and-a-half-story dwelling.
Got it.
It's also on the subdivision.
It's also on the subdivision plan also.
Bill, could you put up that clean, the clean survey that shows them clearly without all of this information? So they can see what the layout looks like on the survey? Well, there's another survey also that we, we looked at earlier.
You mean this, the subdivision plan?
I think the architect's plan is what you're referring to, because it was kind of clean.
Okay.
It didn't have the correct driveway on Lot 302, but it was kind of clean.
Exactly.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I want you to know that we're, we're past the hour point. And we also have a one-hour, uh, workshop. I know you all like staying up late at night, but just want to let you know.
All right, Mr. Kirk, that's a good lead-in. And Mr. Chair, I suggest that, uh, uh, at the present time, we see, we'll see if our neighbor has any questions of the, um, engineer planner, and then I have some suggestions for the board. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Doctor. Just a couple, a couple of questions for Mr. Carpenter. You talked about, uh, I guess you did an analysis of properties in the neighborhood that were, I think, on corners. Am I correct in interpreting that?
I did a survey of the properties within two hundred feet of the site, based on your tax map and the taxes, information, to determine, uh, what the lot dimensions and lot areas were of the various lots. And I came up with that, uh, that number, I told you, there, there are ten corner lots within two hundred feet, one of which is the subject property. There's another property, um, I think across the street on, uh, Edgewood, that's a hundred by a hundred, which is a conforming lot, but the other eight lots are all fifty by a hundred, and they all have houses on them.
Right, uh.
Isn't one of them eighty by a hundred?
I, I didn't hear that.
I guess the question I have is, uh, for the analysis, the survey that you took, do you, do you know, uh, the age of construction of the homes that, that you, you surveyed?
No, I'd have to research, uh, in, in the building documents, uh, as best I could. I, um, I know the houses have been constructed fifty years ago. There's a good chance that, uh, there might not be a good record as to when they were built.
Right, but it's plausible that a number of those homes might have, might have been constructed before. Let's say a planning board would, would have had an opportunity to review that.
I could, I could review those, uh, those eight lots that are non-conforming lots and see if there's any record of a variance being granted for them. But they're, they're pre-existing fifty by a hundred for lots.
Sure, I guess my, my point was that, you know, I think the, the, the construction of homes before planning boards existed. They were, they were probably doing things that, uh, we couldn't kind of go beyond, like what we're doing tonight and having a conversation about your, your application.
But the whole idea is to, you know, you have a neighborhood, you'd like to stay with the same neighborhood scheme. I'm sure you, uh, you'd love to have all hundred-foot lots on the corner, but that's not what this neighborhood is all about. Uh, I understand why they went with the hundred-foot lots on the corner, but that's not what you have.
Sure, uh, Mr. Vaughn, if I might, how old is your house? Uh, our house was built in nineteen ninety. Okay, because I think, yeah, I thought your house was a newer one, also across the street, uh, and throughout, scattered throughout the neighborhood, there are newer homes, for sure. So I think the intent for this property was to have, uh, you know, fifty-foot lots with, with homes on them. Certainly, that's what it appears. Uh, understandable, uh, I, I think the concern that we have, obviously, is the fact, and, um, you know, I think the, the idea that this, sort of this park, this wooded lot, which is next to the property, you know, I'm very concerned by the number of trees. If I counted correctly, I could be wrong, please, please let me know. Uh, but there are a number of full-growth oak trees that would have to be removed. Uh, and I'm assuming there's some other, uh, deciduous trees as well that would have to be removed. So it was eight, was that, was that an accurate number? I'd like to speak on that somewhat, this is Dennis talking. The, these deciduous trees, there would be none, none removed. They may be moved or relocated, but I, I'm a big proponent of trees. So none of them would be removed, if anything, we could add more deciduous. And I know how important this, you know, the, the character of the property is to you, you know, Mr. Clay. So, um, we, you know, you and I have spoken about that in the past. There are, there is a tree that is leaning, that is unsafe, that must come down. And then there are a few others that are, um, part of one tree, if you will, almost, they're offshoots. So we would be doing it to the absolute minimum, and I'd be happy to speak with you both about any additional trees that we may be able to put on the property. And assure you that in regards to the drainage, just to touch on that, that we've, our engineer, and we've done these many times before, that virtually no water would go your direction at all. We would, we would alleviate all water drainage runoff into our drywells and recharge them. And I think, you know, with the way that the existing garage is, is in disrepair, many neighbors have told me they would love to see it go. And I think a more charming house on that property would certainly be.
Objection, you can't make comments like that. If you want to have, uh, folks come in and, uh, testify about their feelings, that's fine. You can't make, uh, hearsay comments like that.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're really running through on time, and it does not appear that we're going to be close to a vote unless I'm wrong here. Um, I'm gonna ask Sandy to jump in.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, I suggest we have to adjourn this hearing, uh, for, for many reasons. And I'll, I'll start with the question of Mr. Fitzgerald. And Mr. Fitzgerald, I, I heard, uh, some, uh, comment by Mr. Carpenter about a study, and I, did, you didn't see a study that he was referring to? Is that, is that what I heard? Mr. Fitzgerald, Bill?
I, it was not submitted, no.
All right.
It has to come to the board's office, which it did not. So I'm not saying that it's not, I mean, if we're gonna adjourn, we're reviewing it, I have no problem with it. I'm just saying it was not submitted in a timely manner. I believe I got it by email today.
Very good, understood, and, and certainly, uh, any, uh, like that need to be on file well before, uh, the time you refer to, at least ten days in advance. So that's one reason alone that we need to adjourn. If Mr. Fitzgerald discerns that, uh, he should make an analysis of that, he should be given time. He should be given time to, uh, provide an amended report. Likewise, we heard Mr. Carpenter testify also as a, uh, principal planner. And of course, we didn't have Mr. Higgins here tonight. He should be given the opportunity to, uh, even listen to the tape. Uh, if you look at his report, it's very factual. Of course, Mr. Carpenter, uh, was making testimony under the positive and negative criteria. Mr. Higgins should be given the opportunity, if he feels proper, to put it in writing. Or he can, uh, give a verbal report next time. So, uh, for that reason alone, I suggest that we adjourn. I, I have a question for counsel, are you planning to bring back both of your witnesses?
Um, I would, I would bring back Mr., well, we would have them both, I don't know if we even need any more testimony from them, but I certainly am available to answer any questions. I would want Mr. Carpenter to come back to be able to, uh, go through the, the soil boring, the stormwater calculations, and the soil permeability, uh, testing that was done.
Very good, and, um, and in the normal course, we always ask counsel to, uh, execute consent to. Very good, and, and in the normal course, we always ask counsel to execute consent to extend the time for decision. So that'll be sent to you by our secretary, and you agree to sign that, I'm sure, right?
Yes, I do.
That's okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I suggest that we adjourn based on those premises I suggested. Mr. Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes, Mr. Wenzel, you agree with that? We'll adjourn for the, for the time being to the next meeting?
Yes, I do, yes, I have no problem at all, as long as we're on the next meeting.
Okay, and there won't be need for additional advertising notice to the public.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, we've formally adjourned that. And we can thank Sandy Brown and Wenzel and the witnesses. And now we can proceed as suggested by our director.
For a housekeeping note, before we go to workshop, with the resignation of Chairman Varelli, we would need a motion as to the planning board chair and vice chair. I, I ask that we do that now for housekeeping purposes, so that we move forward into the workshop cleanly.
All right, so if I understand, Mr. Kirk, you're asking for someone to nominate someone to be the new chairman in light of the resignation of Mr. Varelli?
Yes, please.
Is there someone who would like to nominate anyone in the board to be the new chair?
I will nominate.
Make a nomination.
All right, who was speaking first?
That was me, I think it was Ed Sandy.
All right, and, and your nomination?
For Dr. Di Benedetto.
You beat me to it, what the hell was that? I'll second.
Is that the doctor?
That was Jeff.
I didn't second.
I seconded it.
All right, any other nominations? Then it's closed, roll call vote, please. Amy? Hello? Amy, you're muted. Yes?
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Siano? Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
All right, so it's unanimous, I didn't hear Mr. Siano's vote, he's muted, I suppose, but it's unanimous. Nevertheless, congratulations, Dr. Di Benedetto.
Thank you.
So now you, as the new chair, can ask for a motion to appoint a vice chair.
I wanted to appoint Peter Siano as the vice chair.
All right, so that's your motion, is there a second for that?
I'll second.
All right, is that Mr. Weinstein?
Dave, Dave can do it.
All right.
He was very eager, I can see his body motion.
You get to win that one, that's a second. And does Siano know that he's being elevated here?
I had it on mute, yes, I'm, I'm good.
Oh, you're back, okay, very good. Roll call vote, please.
Say yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Di Filia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes. Congratulations. All right, Mr. Kirk, between you and the new chair, you can start the proceeding.
Well, the, the next we have is the long anticipated seminar from John Barry. He's the principal planner from Higher Rural Associates and Red Bank, and he will be going over the, the conversation that we, all the conversations we've had with regard to rules, process, board professionals, you know, the tasks at hand, ordinances, and any and all questions that the board may have. So that we have these questions now as opposed to like the deal and 35 hearings when a lot of things had been let go from years past, and we'd like to tighten them up. So with that, John, please take. John, go ahead, oh you.
That was Sandy Brown interfering on your presentation, Mr. Chair, sorry. Good to see you. It was good to mention deal land as an example. This board hasn't had a workshop like this in many, many years. It's a very good exercise, but as I discussed with one board member, you know, we just have to be careful that this is not an executive hearing, obviously. And of greater importance, we have to keep to generalities. Because, just because Mr. Kirk mentioned deal land, that, as you generally know, is on appeal. It's possible, I'm not going to say if it's likely or not, but it's possible, could be remanded. So that's a good example of why you should not bring up particular examples for matters that are pending. So please try to keep your questions generic. They may be particular concerns of yours because of, you know, past hearings we've had. And I'm sure Mr. Barry is here to answer all your questions. But with that as a premise, good to see you, Mr. Barry, what would you like to say?
Hi, thanks for taking some time this evening. I know that this has been in the works for quite some time. I actually looked back at my notes, it's been nearly a year since Ron and I first discussed this, so it's been a strange, strange year. My name's John Barry, I'm a professional planner. I represent half a dozen boards regularly and appear for special projects in front of other boards from time to time. And I also teach a, a class twice a year that is to prepare people to sit for the New Jersey Professional Planner's Exam. So I have a little bit of background in municipal land use law and, and general municipal planning. So I guess the, the first area that, that I'll touch on, and well, I have a half a dozen or so topics that I think are important, relevant, and I'll try and go through them one at a time, and maybe we can take questions as we go through the topics, if, if that works for the board. So the, the first area is really all about process and ensuring that board has a handle on its role and that the process is fair and consistent for the applicants, so that they understand what they're getting into and what they can expect when they, when they appear before the board. Does the, does the board have bylaws? Do you have a codified set of rules? You do? I'm, I'm sorry, was that no?
Many years ago, this board did, and it was determined during a prior hearing that they were not necessarily effective. So it's been determined that we don't have them.
Okay, well, that's something to think about for, for another day perhaps, but sometimes it can be easier to maintain and follow rules if they, if they do exist. You know, one, one area where that comes up a lot is in terms of public participation. Now certainly, you're all volunteers, you're all residents, and you want to make sure your neighbors have fair opportunity to, to speak and a chance to comment on issues that concern them. But at the same time, it's very easy to derail proceedings with some long-winded speeches, repetitive questions, and things of that nature. So it can be helpful at times if there, if there is a, a time limit in place that's publicized, that's people are aware of, so that you can prevent the filibustering that may take place or the, the repetition. To a certain extent, that, that does fall on the chairman's shoulders to, to enforce and, and move things along in, in a timely way. And congratulations, Doctor, on your, on your appointment. That's a, it's a important job and certainly a big responsibility. The, running the meeting is, is a very, can be a very fraught experience, I think. And a lot of times, the, the meetings can take on the personality of the chairman if it's in the chair's desire to exercise that authority. So that's to say is that you don't want to cut people off, but sometimes people do need a little nudging to move along, or especially if there's a, a repetitive pattern to the questioning that, that can certainly happen in a lot of applications. The so as far as process, again, the applicant's timing of professional reviews, and I, I don't, I'm not familiar with the ins and outs of how, how your, your board professionals' reviews are, are conducted, or when they're given to the applicants, how much time they have, but several days in advance is beneficial. I'd say probably somewhere around five days if possible is beneficial, both to the board members and the applicants, gives you a chance to be prepared. It gives the applicant a chance to prepare themselves for what the main issues may be from the, the board's perspective. And getting memos at the last minute can be a challenge for the applicant, and it prevents you folks from having a chance to read and digest materials. So whether there's an official rule in place or an informal rule about having a review memo on file or distributed by, by a certain day prior to the meeting, that may be something that, that could be beneficial to all parties in terms of making things run smoothly and, and making sure that the process is a, is a fair and consistent one. And then in terms of, of your preparation for, for the meeting, I think that it is important, if you have the time, and of course, you're volunteers, but it is important to familiarize yourselves with the materials and to, to visit the sites where the applications are taking place. Having, I can speak from my experience. Sorry, was that?
Well, that, that, what you just said about visiting the sites, has that, that really hasn't been something that we actively do or are expected to do, I don't think. I mean, I think we know what the sites are, so is that something that we want to start incorporating into our, into how we're working?
Well, I would suggest that on a regular basis that you do that. I don't know if, John, you have any particular suggestions on that?
My experience in, in my work in preparing reviews for boards is that a site visit is absolutely crucial. Google Earth, Google Street View are wonderful tools, but there's just something a little more real about seeing the place in person, getting a sense of the dynamics, and, you know, you'll have an applicant say what they need to say to support their application, you may have neighbors complaining. And if you haven't been out to see where that tree is, what that fence looks like, those kinds of things, it, it's harder for you to weigh that testimony, and
Yeah, I don't, I'm of this degree, but we don't get the, we don't get the documents really until like the day before, right?
So I, as I, as I said about trying to get things, you know, five days, seven days ahead of time, and that's, that's a process that goes beyond your general scope here, probably. That's a broader thing that I think that the township may need to work on as a whole. But I think it would be beneficial for any board, and, and certainly if, if you don't have a chance to see those documents until the last minute, it, it does make it harder for you to prepare and to have an educated view on the, on the application.
Yeah, I, I agree, this is Pete. We did it on the zoning board. That was something we did all the time. So, you know, I have to agree with John because you get to actually see the property and look at it. I have to admit, I haven't done that, that much with the planning board, but I think that's an excellent piece of advice that you're offering us, and if we can get this, you know, a week or so, you can drive by and take a look at it, I think that'd be important for all of us. Because a lot of times on the zoning board, we actually saw stuff that wasn't really, that, you know, when you're looking at pictures or photographs or, or drawings that you really can't get a flavor for, and I think it just makes it all come together for you to make the correct decision. So I agree with you there.
Ron, are you on the call? Is Ron there?
I'm muted, there we go.
There you are.
How's that?
Why can't we get our materials quicker? Why are we getting, why can't we get like?
There's no reason, no, we can just adjust the process and have it, they are always here 10 days earlier, and we will have it to the board members between three to five days prior to the hearing.
So if, if our hearings are on Monday, that would mean on every Friday, we would get our packet?
At the latest.
Latest.
At the latest. And what do you, what does the rest of the board feel about that? Do you think that's satisfactory? Or do you think we need more time?
Well, three days gives us better than a few hours.
Well, certainly.
You know, so this way, if you get it by Friday the latest, you can at least, you know, if you have some time over the weekend to drive by the property.
Yeah, not a problem, he said that the justice process is here, but that's an easy checkoff on John's suggestions, that's easy. Well, easy, easy for you, harder for me.
I, I guess my question is, I, you know, I go back to even tonight, the completeness of the packets. A lot of the exhibits that he was giving us tonight on those PDFs were not included in the materials that were provided to us. And especially as we consider being virtual, I know, Ron, you're sitting to me hearing about this, but the lack of digital that our board has. And so I guess my question to John is, are, how, how do other boards deal with? I understand we have our own taxes, our own processes. How do other boards deal with getting this very specific engineering, large drawings, and, and kind of building their packets? So we can, you know, the timing is one thing, but I think also what's actually included in those, I think would be helpful.
Sure. Over the last six months, I, I'd say that virtually all, if not all of my boards have, whether they wanted to or not, shifted to a digital distribution system. The professionals on the applicant side, the engineers, whether you got a traffic report, if you got some kind of planning report, you got architectural plans, whatever it is, all of the professionals are preparing those materials digitally anyway. So printing them out is another step for the applicant. So distribution, and sometimes these are big files. Anytime you have a, a larger site plan with, with, you know, big engineering drawings, they're large files, they're too big to email a lot of times. So that requires an extra step in the technical process of setting up a Dropbox or a Google Drive or
Was there, is there an application like in, like the Board of Education, we use Board Docs where, where everything gets posted to a central holding place, and then we all can look at it, that central holding place, without having to worry about, you know, Dropbox and things like that, and it's like, you know, user experience that has the, has the easy click-through to kind of bring up the documents and the information.
Yeah, there's any number of different ways it could be set up. I think that would be the, probably the township's preferred IT solution. I don't think for, for anybody who can maintain a website or do that kind of technical work, setting something up where you could have a portal for these kinds of documents, I don't think it would be a major challenge, just, just a matter of getting it done.
I can, if I could say something, I know, and Ron, can you back me up on this? You, when you say you have everything 10 days prior, you have all the plans for whoever's going to be coming before our board in your office 10 days prior, correct?
Correct.
So any of us can go to Ron's office?
No, no, I understand that, Doctor, I, I'm asking about them being I, I'm asking about them being digitized. So that the board is given, you know, apparently it seems to be a problem in the past, that when we do get these plans, you know, I'm using big hand motions, but they're huge pieces of paper. And so my question to John is, especially given COVID, how have other boards digitized those larger plans? Because that seems to be the impediments, or at least was told to me in the past, of the impediment of providing all of the boards with a, with a digital book, not something that we can go to Ron's office or do. I, I think that's, that's where I, that's where I'm curious about.
And, and typically, it wouldn't involve anybody in the town having to digitize something. It would be a request
So the professionals provide that.
Have the applicants submit a digital package, whether it comes, it gets delivered on a flash drive, or if they provide links to materials that can be downloaded. I, I think, for the purposes of the record, it would probably make sense to have them delivered on a, on a flash drive, which is a pretty common practice at this point, I think. And, you know, that, that could be a, a request at this point, if it's not formalized somewhere, and hopefully the applicants understand.
Yeah, we would have to change an ordinance, but, but we could certainly request it this time. And just to let you know, John, prior to my arrival here, they used to send packages out, you know, of all, of all the paperwork to each, everyone's home.
Oh, no, yes, yeah.
And, and what ha, and what happened was, this board, I need your buy-in, because the previous boards would come in, and at least three quarters of the members would come in with the envelope still sealed, never having opened them. So they stopped that process before I came on. As long as everyone's willing to, to buy in, and, you know, there's no problem, we'll do the extra effort here. It's just, you know, it's just one more step for us, but it's not a problem for us. For the, in the meantime, you'd have to come down here 10 days prior, we'll change the ordinance and have everything, you know, digitally as part of the requirement.
That would be great, Ron, and I would just ask the chairman that, that we do actually hold to that, and I, I would, I would like, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, you know, I'd like to see that ordinance changed, and I think it would make us more productive and a better board, you know, which is all, what we're all trying to do is serve the community in the best way that we can, so.
So I, I will move forward on that with the ordinance change. It, it'll take a little while, because we're government, and we move slow as far as ordinance changes go, but when tomorrow come, morning comes around, we'll start the process.
So Ron, I'd like to address some documents that are introduced by applicants, especially through attorneys sometimes. They're not the documents that are on file 10 days in advance. Their documents are provided because of different reasons, you know, they're prepared just beforehand, no one's looked at them. Do you have an opinion in your experience as to, you know, whether a board in, in the general course should allow that? And is there any difference under the COVID era?
So my, my opinion on that is, there's, there's two ways to look at it. If a revised plan has been prepared in response to a, a board professional's review, so let's say your, your engineer, your planner prepares a review memo that gets circulated, and then the applicant wants to address some points that were raised in that review, and they are within the 10-day period to file a document, but they can prepare an exhibit and introduce it as evidence at, at the board hearing. I think in that case, where it's indirect response to something, it can be very productive. It can be, it can show that they are proactively working to try to take care of your professionals' concerns, and not show up and just say, oh, yeah, we'll deal with it later. So I, I think that that's a, that's a good, that can be a very good process. If it's a change that kind of comes out of left field, and now you're not sure what their motivations are, and maybe it's trying to pull a fast one, who knows? That's a little, a little different. You know, they can, they can enter an exhibit, but then you may say, we need our professionals to take a look at this, you'll have to come back next month. You know, that's, that's the, the trade-off. But I think if it's something that's, that's really been prepared in response to a request or a comment, then I think it's a productive way of doing business.
Yeah, I mentioned in part because, I guess we're talking about the board being given the opportunity of seeing all the documents, and in reality, if we're talking about the 10-day rule, and Ron, and you getting this out, you might not have all the documents. And as John indicated, there might be, in the discretion of the board, there might be a reason to allow that, at least for identification purposes.
Yeah. Okay, any other?
Question, to be clear, so if we digitized, or let's just say the applicants digitize whatever they're submitting to the board, how would we, the board, get them, Ron? We'd have to come to Town Hall and get it?
No. We, we could have a mailbox for you, certainly, to pick up, and we'd have it on a CD-ROM would be the easiest way. It, it could possibly be a website that we have, where you have a certain PIN number. When I talk to IT tomorrow, I'll find out what the most effective way is.
Yeah, okay, I think that's a good idea. Whatever way we end up with it, but I think it's a good idea to get it ahead of time. Because a lot of times, I'll, I'll get the document, and then I like to read it, then I want to go see the site, and then I'm running out of time. You know, just as we get them, and I know you guys are swamped, but it'll help.
Can I, can I share my screen briefly? Is that a possibility? I just wanted, I was just going to show you another town's website.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, so this is Borough Milltown's planning board website. Their, their board secretary is also the, the Borough Clerk, and does a nice job of keeping things organized. So just on the regular town website, they've got their meeting information, agenda, they've got the Zoom information for the meeting, so you click the link, or you call in, whatever your preference. They have recordings of old meetings, and then they have all the materials for the applications, the, and you, you click the link, and, you know, there's the, eventually, there's the subdivision application materials. And it's, so then it's there, it's not just for the board members, but members of the public, or us right now can, can go get the materials. So that's, that's one way to do it.
And I think that I, I prefer the website idea only because, and, and I know we've heard it, and it's not, it's definitely not fair to Amy and Ron, when folks are saying, well, the materials weren't available. Well, if it's on the website, then they can't say that, and, and they can review it, right? That's, that's one of the comments that I, I think has been, we've heard in a few applications that would be addressed if we wouldn't have a, a website.
Right, and, and there, there may still be some folks who want to come in and see the plans in the office. That's not going to go away, but I think that especially the, the COVID situation has, has spurred some, some progress, some innovation, some creativity with how we can share and disseminate these documents. So I think, I think a combined system like that, where people can, they don't have to come in and bother anybody, they don't have to come in and stand in line, or wait around, or whatever, they can just hop on at their leisure. Okay, so
Just let me ask you a question, does that satisfy public notice also, by having a website like that?
Now, to this point, the, the public notice still needs to be given in the, in the traditional way. The, the website is, is supplemental, you can't, you know, until, until some, some point in the future, when, when they decide to change it, perhaps, you can't substitute just a strictly electronic notice for, for the, the tried and true methods.
That's correct.
So a couple other topics, in terms of, we've talked about a little bit about preparation and process, and in terms of the board's role in evaluating the application, and trying, trying your best to stay focused on the task at hand, because sometimes you have, it's easy to go on, on tangents, and especially when issues get raised out of, that may not have been there at the beginning, and, you know, things, things can kind of move along in different directions. But, you know, to the extent that the board can understand what the applicant is seeking approval for, number one, and then, number two, if there's any variance relief beyond that, so is it a subdivision application, is it a site plan application? There's certain different concerns in, in the two. And then, are there variances? And when there are variances, then you have a, a different level of proof required, and you have a different level of, now I want to say bargaining, but you, there's, there's a little more wiggle room in terms of how the application proceeds, because really the ordinance, the, the township's ordinance is, is the law, and that should really be the, the lens that the board views these applications. You may not personally like a certain thing, but if it's, that's what the ordinance says, that's really what the applicant is entitled to in terms of a setback, or lot coverage, or whatever the, the issue is. You know, if there are consistently some of the same concerns coming up, where you, the board feels the ordinance is lacking in some way, or inconsistent with its goals in some way, then you have the, the master plan reexamination process, which comes around periodically, and you can certainly move to amend the ordinance and address some of those concerns. So if there's consistent issues that you find, you know, that are constantly something you're concerned about, it's constantly something you don't, you don't like, that you have to approve, well, maybe you keep that in mind and, and take a closer look at it through the, the process that the, the law gives us. The there's some other things that, that do, I, I find tend to be difficult or frustrating for my boards sometimes, are, are things that are relevant to the conversations that come up, but are really outside of your ability to control, or your, your purview. You know, sometimes you'll have neighbors coming in to talk about it, things that are really enforcement issues, they're just general police power kinds of things that the board can't, can't really do anything about, but those kinds of concerns or complaints can, can come up a lot in applications. You know, and back to the public comment, the you know, the, the neighbor this evening seemed very pleasant, but sometimes neighbors have personal disputes that can spill over into other, other matters. So trying to make sure that the board doesn't get wrapped up in, in somebody's border dispute between their, their fences of their properties, where it's, it's not a, not the board's issue, but it can spill over into it.
You know, John, if I can jump in here, I've been on this board for 15 years now, and what was enlightening, obviously, was the deal development on Jill Road, and Sandy guided us through that somehow, with the chaos that was going on. But I think upfront, with setting the ground rules as far as the amount of times somebody can speak, they can't be repetitive, I mean, that was killing us. I mean, it was going over and over, or again and again, with different people saying the same thing. And you're saying, if I understood you, we have to change the bylaws? And Ron, you said that that could be done?
I believe the answer is yes, but it would be guided by Sandy as far as, you know, us having rules and regulations, but these rules and regulations must follow the municipal land use laws of the state of New Jersey, and not be conflicting, and it's not, it will be a lot easier for the first task that we talked about, about getting your electronic plans and changing your ordinances, than it will be to draft rules and regulations. Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to tread lightly on the rules and regulations area.
Yeah. We're merging who's that?
Go ahead, Sanford, sorry, sorry, Sandy.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to say, I was just going to say, like, I would actually disagree with that. I, I think the most frustrating thing, at least for me personally during that chaos that we've been generally talking about, is the fact that there were no rules or regulations, and then when we asked for them, we were not given them. And so I understand Sandy has a difficult task to accomplish, but I would implore the chair and our professionals to get started on that ASAP, because I think without rules, we are living in chaos. And I believe that, given some of our past performances, especially in front of the community, not having those ground rules set, and I go back to Ed's comment from earlier, you know, I continually hear from the community about, you know, they come up to me, and they talk to me about how they feel about things that are happening in the planning board. And the one thing that I continually hear about is transparency, not having access to the documents in enough time, not being able to review them, and then secondarily, what, what rules are we playing by? And it seems as though, application to application, we're kind of making this up as we go along. So I would actually disagree with that, Ron. I would say that that is probably the key and most important thing, I, hopefully we can get out of this, and I would also hope that a professional like John, who we've asked to come here today, might have some examples, or some best practices that he can share with Sandy, and maybe get us jump-started on that, so he doesn't have to start at ground zero.
Okay, well, number one would be that the transparency portion is, anyone at any time can come in to see all the documents. If, if they're, if they're willing to come in, I mean, that, that's just open and as transparent as it can be. If someone doesn't want to take the effort to come down to the office, then that's, you know, that was a pre-COVID problem for a long time. What I'm saying is, when we're making rules and regulations, there's no problem making rules and regulations, but they have to be in accordance with municipal land use laws. And that's where I'm bringing Sandy in the conversation on that end.
I would, I would expect that we would be following the municipal land use laws. I mean, I guess my point is, and, and you've heard me drone, drone on this, Ron, it's 2020, and, you know, I find it, I find it just, I find it ridiculous that if it be a appropriation from the council, or, you know, I don't know how we fix sort some of these things, you know, I feel like we're cooperating in 1980 laws.
But we, we fix these problems by bringing in, you know, and having a workshop that probably hasn't happened in 15 years or more, and start these conversations. That, that's where I believe we start.
No, I appreciate it, and I, like, like I said, I would hope that, you know, somebody like John could hopefully give us some guidance onto best practices and things, you know, like that's, I think what's in this conversation, you know, I'm glad you shot us an email earlier so we could talk about these things, but I think, I, I continually go back to, I feel like we just, I don't have any concept of what's best practices. I talk with friends and other, you know, I'm friends with the, the guy who runs the Newark, he's the chairman of the Newark Planning Board. Obviously, they're a little different than Ocean Township, and the rules that they, and practices that they do are different than what we do, but I guess I don't have an idea of what are those best practices, and then without, without knowing those best practices, without having a set of rules or regulations, I just feel like we're just flags in the air. So I'll leave it there. I'm sorry, I've taken up enough time.
So i- in terms of the, the rules that have been referred to in relationship to control of meetings, I don't think that in the final analysis, some of the expressed concerns about control at the meetings is going to be resolved by anything that might be in rules that, that we certainly can pass. But, and to be generic about it, some people in the public perceive that, you know, they can talk forever at a, a public meeting of, of the Township Committee, for example, which just imposed recently, I think it was a five-minute rule. And there are general parameters under law, which, you know, whether or not they're rules, it, it's really irrelevant, but I, I can direct some points to our new chair. But, uh, I, I can direct some points to our new chair uh, because I'm sure our new chair is going to, um, listen to those parameters that are really, they're part of any hearing. It, it doesn't have anything to do with the rules. But when we talk about no redundant comments, you know, if we talk about the instructions that we're given, let's say in some past uh, applications where we had a lot of folks, there's a lot of discretion on the part of the chair to, uh, to allow comments or not. If some folks are thinking that you can, um, clearly limit comments based on time. And I have found that there's a, a big distinction between comments at public meetings like at a board event meeting or a tension committee meeting and a planning meeting, because our meetings are more like judicial hearings. And there are, there are some aggravating reasons why, uh, planning boards and boards of adjustment don't have rules that limit comments to express period of time. Uh, John, I don't know if you want to intervene at this point to address that particular point. But there are, uh, there are fundamental distinguishes under the, the, uh, the New Jersey Supreme Court cases, especially dealing with what we call Wes Windsor, which was a case dealing with the Board of Ed, which allowed a set, uh, time limit for, for public comment versus, uh, N L U L hearings. John.
So I, I have had attorneys and boards point to the section, um, forty, colon, fifty-five, D ten D that talks about the presiding officer, uh, can impose reasonable limitations as to time and number of witnesses. And take that to mean essentially that the board chair can say, you've said your piece. Next, um, I had, I, and John, you mentioned Newark. I happen to be the planner for the Newark Planning Board. Uh, so I'm very familiar with their operations. The, um, Newark has a, has a three minute limit on comments. That's a little short. I don't know if that, um, would, would fly necessarily in, in the face of, of a challenge. But, um, but I think whether it's something that is written into rules or not, I think that the chair ultimately does have some discretion as to limiting comment that is repetitive, that is off topic, that really, um, espe- especially repetitive, I think is the key one, because when you have a, a large group of people with a common goal, then coming up and saying the same or almost the same thing for five, 10, 15 minutes at a time, it, it's essentially a filibuster and it can drag things out to the sole end of dragging things out. So, uh, you know, that, that may be something that is, is discussed and becomes a goal of, of certain proceedings rather than a formal policy. But, um, you know, and, and Sandy, I, you, you would know better than I probably about the, the legal side of it. And, you know, perhaps there's, there's a little, little research to be done. I'm not sure. But if it is something that could be in, in, in rules, then that's another consideration.
Yeah. Um, so, I mean, on behalf of this board and many other boards over the decades, one of the standard arguments by folks who don't like decisions and boards is that there was a failure of due process. And that standard is sometimes difficult to defend if you're a board attorney. So we have experienced, uh, not to talk about particular cases, but you have experienced where some very experienced practitioners have appeared before us on behalf applicants. And sometimes you have been bewildered by, uh, the failure of those experienced attorneys to necessarily object, uh, on comments that, you know, may, may go a bit beyond, but there's a calculation for that because in those cases, when you go before appellate panels, whether or not it's before the Superior Court or literally the appellate division or the Supreme Court, if the record indicates, uh, a, a, even a feel-good idea that people were given a fair shake, that's the best way to defend a due process complaint. So for whatever that's worth, uh, there is a rationale for sometimes letting some folks go more than three point five minutes, for example, or five minutes, whatever, whatever you're referring to, John, in terms of some of your other boards, because, uh, again, I, I've done a lot of research over, on this issue over the years for different boards. It's, it's complicated like, like many other things dealing with the M L U L. But, uh, a- again, if we go back to our chair, we go back to, um, you know, especially cutting down on redundant repetitive questions. I think that's the best way to handle it. A- and what we really haven't talked about, because that's not really, you can't stop a hearing at any particular point. And you really have to have everybody be given a chance, uh, but not a chance to, to do what you've expressed a concern about, John.
Right. And I, and I think, I think ultimately that's, that's the best practice. And if you're, it, I think it's more about running the meeting and keeping things flowing rather than putting a number in, in the rules. I think you're, I think that's probably the, in your best interest.
Oh, if you did put a number in the rules, you can't fall back on that number, even though someone would be giving testimony or, or comments from the public or whatever. You can't say it's the chair, hey, listen, you know, we do have a five minute rule, but we're not enforcing it. You know, I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing to have some type of number or some type of parameters there. It doesn't mean that it has to be enforced. It's another tool for the chairman to use at his discretion. Well, we're in a public meeting and, uh, I would take too much time just to go into the, the.
But legally, it's not good.
I suggest that you and I talk offline about this, Dr. President, as the new chair.
Very good.
Uh, that'd probably be more cost productive, uh, time-wise and see if we, at the end of that, maybe you'll come up with a suggestion that, that, you know, fits in perfectly with what you feel's the best.
Okay, very good.
And, and to the point about a template for rules or model rules in the, um, New Jersey zoning and land use book, that's kind of our practitioners bible, the, the Cox book that attorneys, planners rely on for a lot of different information. There is a set of, of planning board model rules is one of, yes, I see, uh, Edward's got it there. Um, there's a set of model rules in the, in one of the appendices of that book that I think are pretty, pretty standard stuff. And you get a sense then for what, what is in the rules and it just kind of, uh, it, it, it can, it can give a little focus perhaps sometimes.
Yeah, a good point, John. You know, the rules that were, uh, unofficially, uh, part of this board, you know, decades ago, it's a good starting point, uh, you know, they were pretty standard. Uh, I think they came out of the Cox Treatise probably when they were prepared long before I became board attorney. Uh, and, and it, it sounds like it's the desire of the board that, that that be prepared. I can coordinate with Ron on that. And, and we'll get you something. We'll coordinate, uh, with the, the chair. If you want to have like a subcommittee of less than the majority of the board. I mean, we can process it that way. I'd suggest that, uh, Mr. Kirk, uh, Ron have, yeah, a, a big say in that. Uh, it's, it's a large part of the administration of the board too, but certainly can be done and it can be done, you know, without much time.
Yeah. The only, the only difference that I have Sandy would be that I would like no subcommittee. I would like this all to be transparent throughout all the board members. You know, so that everyone knows what the rules have been and how we got there.
The only question is that who takes the first stab then, Ron? Uh, I mean, will you be the one who just prepares what you think is correct? You can send it out for review and comment. We can discuss it as a, as a workshop item at any board meeting. And, um, uh, we can finalize it. Then it goes through the official process with the township and that's it.
Okay.
Sound like a good plan?
Really plan to make.
Sounds like a good break?
Yeah, I think so. I think that.
Very good.
Okay. So I think the last main thing that I wanted to touch on, cause I know we're approaching our hour. And, uh, Ron is a harsh taskmaster.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, in, in terms of, um, conflicts of interest and the, the perception of, of conflicts. And I know that, um, there may, may be some concerns that have arisen over time about the relationship between professionals in, in various disciplines. And planners, engineers, attorneys, architects work together, um, throughout the state, both on the public side, private side, and their, their relationships between themselves as professionals kind of go along with each case and the, the, having worked with another professional on another matter in another place, whether on a municipal side or a private side, that does not create a conflict of interest in, in my opinion, or I, I believe, you know, really would be viewed that way, um, by any other professionals. The, um, conflict really comes from the relationship with a client, with somebody who has a financial interest in, in an application, where you're getting some kind of benefit potentially through that relationship. But if, uh, if planners and engineers couldn't work with each other and with attorneys in different plate venues on different times, it'd be pretty hard to, to, uh, field our professions. Because, um, it, it tends to be a pretty small world. And one way or another, our, our paths, our paths cross in different ways. And sometimes we work together and sometimes we're on opposite sides of things. And sometimes we're doing a project with an attorney and sometimes that attorney is appearing before one of our boards. But, um, it's part of our professional training, our professional codes of ethics and our responsibilities to our clients that those relationships that we may have and those different projects that we've worked on in the past really don't come into bearing and we're responsible to our boards or to our, our clients. And, you know, we don't owe any particular allegiance to each other. So I think that, um, it's just important to remember that your professionals are here to serve you and to represent the board, provide an opinion, provide support, provide advice. Looking out for both the interests of the town and sound planning practices. And of course, the, um, there's kind of the, the, the overall general welfare. And that, the, the times that they may have worked with other people in the past really, um, don't come into bear on, on the, the representation that you get from them. They should, certainly should not. And it would be, uh, highly surprising if, if they did, because, you know, we're, we're all professionals and we, um, we have to, we have to maintain our standards. So, um, no, there are not to say that there can't be conflicts. And, you know, the recusal when you are within a certain distance of the property, if you're within 200 feet of an application, or if you have a personal or financial arrangement with the applicant. And there's a whole set of laws about that that are over my head. But I've, I've been in, in a couple of situations where I've heard presentations about them. But there are, there's a lot of different standards depending on whether you're an attorney or you're other types of professionals. But ultimately, unless there's a real close personal relationship or some kind of financial interest, um, merely having worked together in the past is, is not, not a conflict. So, um, that's really I think all I have to say on that topic. And I think we've covered all of the big points that, that I wanted to, to discuss. And just to, just to recap, I think some of the, the most beneficial things that, that I think the board can work toward moving forward is to try and disseminate those documents quickly, more quickly, uh, further in advance of, of the meeting. Get the electronic distribution up and running. I think that'll, that'll help achieve a couple of different goals all at the same time. If you are able to, certainly visiting the properties after you've had a chance to, to get the materials, going out, taking a look at the site really does help with understanding the lay of the land and, and what's going on. Can make it much more productive. And I think, um, you know, as, as the meetings run. And also another thing that I didn't really get into, um, and this is something that you can think about and decide for yourselves. I have found that sometimes, um, some board, some boards allow, um, an applicant to present their whole, their whole case, present several witnesses before the, before questions are taken, because oftentimes the way the presentations typically go, you'll have some questions answered that may come up at the beginning in the course of other witness testimony. So then, um, some of those questions may be, may be dealt with in the course of the testimony rather than having to hear, oh, that guy's coming up later. That person will be on in two days, whatever. Um, so that's something that you may want to consider in terms of the, the flow of the meeting. That's I think that's, uh, that's about it.
Thank you.
Welcome. Does anybody have any other, any other questions or comments about any of the things we've discussed?
No, I, I think this is helpful. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Um, Mr. Kirk, any other issues to discuss tonight?
No, I think we've had enough.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, any other items that you or the board members want to, uh, bring up before you ask for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
All the rules.
Doctor Benidetta.
Yes.
Doctor Defilia.
Yes.
Huffy.
Yeah.
Doctor Fisher.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Ciano.
Yes.
Dr. Weinstein.
Yes.